I'd like to open the meeting of the Schuylkill Board. Please, pleasure and allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of comments. I hope, all of you got the Daily Local? If you don't, you ought to take a look at it. Interesting article in today's paper about Wes Vincent supervises to change public comment policy. You might want to take a look at it. Very interesting. I think we handle everything very well. However, if there's changes to be made, there's changes to be made. So, take a look at it, read it on the front and the back page, see where we're coming We are getting, under Judge Griffith's orders, and Bill may be able to give a little more on this too, on the Ozerowski case, $24,904.50 he says we're getting back, but that's not guaranteed.
Well, we got a court order directing Ozerowski and his lawyer to pay us back. He's got time to appeal, or maybe to appeal. So, I wanted to announce that the order was in our favor, indicating that suit should have been brought in first place. So, we're waiting to see what happens there.
Anyhow, that's very interesting. That'll help our coffers a little bit. We aren't the school board, however, some things that maybe some of you might like to know about. As our students return to school, schools will see an increase in state funding, which is interesting. You ought to take a look at it, the idea of where we're coming from. Right now, Phoenixville School District is going to see a 5.9 increase over last year of $628,716 from the government, so, from grants and such. So, might be interesting for some of you to take a look at it. It will help our youngsters out. I don't know if you know about Help First Responders Help You? The yellow dot form that you can put on the back of your, affix it to your decal, the lower left-hand corner of the rear window of a vehicle. This sticker alerts emergency responders to the availability of information to help them provide better care to crash victims. So, that, another thing you ought to take a look at. I'd like to announce that our meeting is presently being videotaped by the township. Is anyone else recording the meeting, so that all attendees of the meeting are aware? Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's go into the minutes. I don't know if all of you read the minutes, but I go over them pretty closely, and to find out what we've done or what we haven't done from last month. In the Emergency Operations Center, we were supposed to have received something, been informed that they're going to get additional volunteers. Have we received any letters, or anybody that wants to serve on them?
No.
Have we put it out on our website?
Fred's actually working on it.
Fred's going to start working on it now.
Well, that was last month. We don't, I'd like to know who, and see if we can speed it up. Seems like we're a little slow on some of this stuff. Also, the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee, Barbara?
Yes.
They selected three candidates to be interviewed. What's the latest on that?
We selected Ed Therkoff, planning and design, at our meeting. With a very excellent collaborative effort, and the interview, we conducted interviews with three different entities, and we judged that Mr. Therkoff's, according to the criteria that we had all established, that he was the top of the heap. So, we felt that he'll do an excellent job for us. So, it's Therkoff, design and planning.
But I think it's fair to say that all three candidates were qualified to be consultants. We just had to pick one, pick the best one.
Well, I didn't think number three was as, because he only talked to him about a male lawyer, not he or she. He said, "The lawyer, he." So, in any case, and he was a Singleton guy, and both Comida, as well as Therkoff, were dualities, and so we didn't know if the Singleton gentleman whom he would send to one of our regional planning commission meetings, so, it was two and a half, in my estimation, were qualified. Pete's laughing. Always transparent, Pete, you know that.
All right, are there any comments, more comments, on the minutes of our last meeting? Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as printed?
So moved.
Any more discussion? Okay.
All in favor?
Reports.
I think we have to say all in favor.
All, no, excuse me, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I've got some comments, if I can make it, make them on the reports, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I have, we're going to go into reports next. First item is-
These are the reports submitted to us? Did we just, I think, did we not just accept them?
Well, the first report that I want, would like to have you make comments on, is the Valley Forge Christian College zoning that you had a meeting on.
Well, the Valley Forge Christian College, which is now, by the way, the University of Valley Forge-
As of the sixteenth?
As of the sixteenth, yes, I was just going to say, of September. They basically agreed that they need to have a little bit of education on our zoning ordinances, particularly, two of them, there was some discussion, there's been going back and forth as to whether they should be in the public facility zone, or whether they should be in the agricultural research zone, and administrative research, I'm sorry, zone. And that's where, that's where they currently are, and to make a long story short, it became very clear to them to basically to stay put, have that same zoning, certainly for the main campus. There's still some discussion going to occur relative to their new property, but it was a good meeting, and they thanked me for coming, and basically, I think they're, they're more educated than they were before.
Okay.
I do have some other comments on reports, though.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just very quickly, I'd like to note that in building permits, we've had no less than four generator, whole house generator permits, applied for and approved. This is a continuing thing that's occurring essentially every month, almost, because we've had so many power outages, as we all know, in the township. The code enforcement report, I guess, I guess my comment is to note that, two comments. One is that 29 South White Horse doesn't have all their windows in yet, which we were led to believe that that would happen, but it's not happened yet. And I just have a question to Mary, whether you're aware, 730 Valley Forge Road, is that, is that the Kennedy Ford dealership?
Is that the one with the trailers?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to understand who was there.
That's the Kennedy dealership.
Okay. The code enforcement officers requested that we remove 530 Valley Park Road from this list, and I'd like to, at appropriate point here, make a motion to so do that. But let me go through the other comments. I just got another, one other. And your report, John, relative to no one, just want to have everyone on the same page, that EAC is not happy with the environmental impact assessment?
I saw Steve's email.
Okay.
Yes, good. I got that tonight.
So, it's likely that will delay the approval process, but I just thought I'd mention. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Jim.
I have one last comment on, Nick does a marvelous job with our roads and repair and all of that, but I do have a request from several residents who live in Valley Forge, Valley Forge Mountain in particular, to request that we try to get the yellow lines painted on Oakwood Lane.
September 12th.
Yay, okay. I will tell my neighbors at the post office, it's dangerous, because I drive a small car, and the big SUVs drive down the middle of the crown of the road, and that yellow line does really provide a safety net for us.
We are right behind these pipelines, if there's no delay of these pipelines tomorrow, then we are on Friday.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Nick, for me, and also for that white line at the bottom of Paul Lemon Drive. That's really a help.
I've got a couple of questions for John. John, how are we doing on the flood, that 1429 State Route flood plain study, the Mobile Home Park? Do you have a new report?
We, we have it, and we're in the process of reviewing it.
Okay. And, were you satisfied with the meeting that you went to for the zoning and such for the Phoenixville Area School District?
Were we satisfied?
Phoenixville Area School District, you attended a meeting August 26?
Mary Lou attended that.
Yeah.
Mary Lou attended that, yeah.
Okay.
She attended on our behalf.
She didn't raise any objections to our conclusions. Actually, contributed to the-
Right, she seemed happy.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my understanding, and when she came back to the meeting, she explained it, and so.
Okay, just wanted to check in. The Township Compost Yard, everybody, it looks like it's going to be opening in early October?
Early October. I wish I could give you a definite date, but I can't see what the weather is with them finishing.
Okay, so, everybody know that for their compost.
Do you have to drop off or keep on?
Well, at this point, it's to drop off, but there's nothing there to pick up.
I think we're at four.
And at this point, it appears to be just for leaves? It's only for leaves.
Do you want to say anything about the EAC? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm on time.
Okay, all right. Anything more on two-minute reports? All right, let's go right into our illustrious treasure.
Fred, don't we have to accept the reports?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what he said.
Make a motion?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Now, we'll go into the treasurer's report.
Okay, as of August 31st, 2014, we have a balance of just under $3 million. I've reviewed all of the bills to be paid, and everything is in order, and we're on track, we're on budget, everything looks good, and we don't really have much else to report. So unless anyone has any specific questions.
Just, where are we, by comparison to last year, are we ahead?
We're about the same.
Same.
The first slide we had with the report from last month.
That's what I thought.
Just a little bit, but not, I think we're pretty much on target.
We are, we are on target, but I had given you that synopsis last month, and we are-
You made the announcement last month.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, go ahead.
I was going to say, I make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Okay, and payment of the bills?
And payment of bills.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. The first one I wanted to come up is, we had a interesting part, the two dates for a upcoming Deval rail trail meetings, and I think Jim has some comments on this. Jim?
Yeah. Basically, we, there are two dates involved here. I think it's the, one is the-
Wednesday, October 8th, and Monday, October 20th, Jim.
Right. The point is that I think we should be involved with this rail trail meeting, relative to the, using the Deval line as, right away, as a trail to get from Phoenixville to basically Deval, which is the intersection of 29 and White Horse, and 29 and White Horse meet there. So, I think, I'd like to make a motion to direct the Environmental Advisory Council and the Planning Commission to send one each representative to each of these meetings that have been identified for us.
That's a good move. I'll second that.
I have a comment.
I have a comment, too.
Okay, hang on.
Okay.
Heather?
I serve on the, as president of the Schuylkill River Heritage Center in Phoenixville, I serve on the green team in that capability, and Phoenixville has been designated as a river town. Adam Suplee, KMS Design, and several other members of this group also serve on this green team, so I already participate in a monthly meeting. I am totally in favor of this, however, I think we need to be realistic in that this Deval line to Malvern depends on Norfolk Southern giving up a piece of track that traverses Charlestown Road in our township, and I do not see that happening anytime in my lifetime. I really don't. It is a wonderful goal to connect in that direction to Malvern and go through Charlestown Township, but at this moment, it is just unfortunately not realistic. We had somebody, let me just finish. We had somebody who was trying to get permission from Norfolk Southern to clean out the weeds in that little island at Pot House Road and 29, and it took me three weeks to find a person at Norfolk Southern to talk to, and I did, and then finally, they said, "If the township wants to take it over, fine, but then you'll be liable if somebody has an accident there, even though you're only cutting weeds." So, they, and this was a year and a half ago. So, I applaud the effort to try to achieve representation, but on the other hand, I think we have to be realistic about those expectations. That's all.
Well, as I understand it, there are three municipalities involved in this. There's Phoenixville, there's Schuylkill Township, because the rail line goes from Phoenixville through Schuylkill to get to Charlestown, and then there's Charlestown Township. That's number one. Number two is, I took a close look at this rail line, okay, the other day. It ends at the first office park after Route 29, White Horse Road intersection, after the turnpike, as you're going towards Exeter. It basically ends, period, because they have cut an entrance that's, I don't know, 300 feet wide, and that section of the track is gone, where, so they can't, they really can't continue the line at that point, and after you back up and you get to the intersection, we just had a form, we're finishing up, I say we, Pennsylvania's, PennDOT is finishing up a $4 million project to make that intersection better able to handle a greater volume of traffic, and they paved over the rail line. And then, the final point is, is that it's my understanding that the overhead bridge that is in the vicinity of Buckwalder Road is in badly in need of maintenance and may be structurally unsafe, certainly for trains, not so sure about somebody walking on it, but that's a whole discussion in and of itself. So, this is a, this is a rail line that's in extreme disrepair, okay? There are trees going through the middle of the tracks. The ties are rotted out, the rails are rusty, needless to say. So, there's, short of Norfolk Southern coming in and relaying that whole line to go someplace, it's not usable for them. So, I think that argument needs to be made to the top of Norfolk Southern, you know, they may be turning a blind eye and-
I'll give you phone numbers if you like. I have several. The other point to be made is, I think, I'm not sure, it's fair for us as the Board of Supervisors to encumber both the Planning Commission and the EAC to require representation here without discussing it with them first.
Well, that was my, my comment to that would be, if, what if no one from either one of them, the commissions can go? So, we're demanding them to do something that they may not, as volunteers, they may not be able to do.
That's highly unlikely, and you're talking about seven or eight people from each committee or commission. That's, to attend to at least one, that's highly unlikely.
I would suggest we table this until we've had a chance to have proper discussion with the Planning Commission and the EAC. The goals I applaud, Jim, as you well know, but on the other hand, I think we need to be realistic with regard to this.
I think we should ask them, I don't think we should demand that someone go. That's how I would put the word for the motion.
Ladies and gentlemen, this, these meetings come after our October meeting, so if the suggestion would be brought up at these two meetings for this month, we would get the people, and then we could vote on it, table it tonight, and vote on it at our October meeting.
I like that a bit, yeah.
I'm okay with that.
So, we do have a motion, though, already made, so, all in favor of the motion that Jim Keller made?
Jim Morrison.
It's tabled.
Okay.
So, that's what we're going to do. We're going to get to the Planning Commission, EAC meeting, ask for representation from them, just make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, and then we will vote on it at this meeting. Okay?
Sound like a plan.
Okay. Thank you. Another announcement.
I have one.
Hang on, I just-
Okay.
If you've been reading, your information's come over to you, the Chester County Association of Township Officials are starting a new ideas, I don't know if I'm in favor of, but that's not for me to say, it's for our Board of Supervisors to say. They're going to have first resolutions will be voted at the November meeting, so that they can be submitted by the PSAT for review, voting in April, so look out for something, you will be receiving something on this, of what they feel that they want to make into law, or to do as an association.
Okay.
Okay, Barbara?
Okay. I have the pleasant responsibility of reporting to all of you that, as a result of initiative begun by Don Ny Moley, who's president of the Friends of Valley Forge National Park Group, coming, coming and meeting with the last fall, along with representation from the Freedoms Foundation, and Jake Michael, who is the trail guide for Chester County, their, their proposal was to try to find a way to connect Valley Forge National Park, possibly to Phoenixville, but certainly to the Schuylkill River Trail. And so, we submitted the cost of the feasibility study, as outlined by John Sartor of Gilmore Associates, $60,000. We had put money into the budget, into the amount of $10,000, because grants were, grants like these always require a match from the municipality. I'm happy to report that we have received $30,000 from the Vision Partnership Plan of Chester County, we received $10,000 from the Pico Green, and we received $5,000 from the Phoenixville Community Health Foundation, calling it the Freedom Trail. We would like to figure out how this will go forward. We have 18 months to begin, to start, to, the work on the task force that is now been completed is comprised of representatives from our Environmental Advisory Council, our Planning Commission, our Historic Commission, our Open Space Commission, and Martha Majewski and myself, with regard to figuring out how this would be possible. And I'd like, John, to give a public thank you to Chris Green, because you had to have the Chester County Landscapes Plan. I was in Mexico, he sent it to me, I was able to complete the grant long distance, because it was due in very early March, and if Chris hadn't done that and communicated with me in being able to complete the grant writing, we never would have gotten it. So, please, a public thank you is due to Chris in the way in which he worked with us with Valley Park, and I'm looking forward, we're all looking forward to trying to figure out a really positive way for the Freedom Trail to become a reality. The Schuylkill Township were named for the river, and working, I also have to thank Dr. Don Meyer of the Valley Forge Christian College, because he actually edited the grant that I wrote, too, and added some things. So, we have really good partners between the Girl Scouts, the Freedom Foundation, the Valley Forge TMA, and I'm looking forward to getting started, so hopefully, in September, this work, this homework will begin.
Good, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, and thank you for all your help in editing, too. We have a good group doing all the edits. Martha and Madeline did all the color pictures and all the stuff that had to be done, really, thank you. So, it was a really positive announcement.
I just have to make one correction, it's now the University of Valley Forge.
It will be in September 16th.
That's right. All right. Has anybody, please sign in at the podium, if you've not already done so, if you wish to speak, or come to the podium, once recognized by myself.
I've got this.
I'll get that in just a minute. There's going to be a county household hazardous waste event that'll be held Saturday, September 6th, from 9:00 to 3:00, at New Garden Township Maintenance Building, Gap Newport Road, in Landonburg, Pennsylvania. The Valley Forge Fire Company is going to have its spaghetti dinner, or, come up at the, at the main station on September, Sunday, September 21st.
At 4:00 PM.
That's right. At 4:00.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Are you looking to announce about Michael Gray?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Just a very brief announcement, but the, the Schuylkill River Heritage Center in Phoenixville will be having a very unique presentation next week, September 9th. Steve Ditman, who is a Chester County historian, has spent the whole summer researching various historic forges, not only in Chester, but Berks and Montgomery County. This whole region was full of iron ore, and so, a lot of it was processed and refined in places like Phoenixville and Burnsboro, and other, other places were able to use the iron ore. So, in the, he's going to be at the Schuylkill River Heritage Center on Tuesday, September 9th, 7:30, it's, the admission is free, no registration is required. Thank you.
Sure. Volunteers are needed for the Great American Cleanup in Schuylkill Township on Saturday, September 27th, in the Pickering Preserve. For more information, contact Earl Cramm of the Township CAC Committee. I'd like to get a lot of people out there for that. The Environmental Advisory Council is presenting a free workshop, free workshop, October 9th, on the importance of repairing buffers along the township's waterways. Be something that all of us should attend, if you don't know about repairing buffers and how we can protect our streams. And the Township Semi-Annual Shred Event for Residents- And the Township Semi-Annual Shred Event for Residents will be also Saturday, October 11th, at 8:00 to noon, 8:00 to 12:00 noon, at the Cat Pickering Campus. The October events I'll be announcing also at the October meeting, but I just want to have you put them on your calendar for now. Any other announcements?
Fred, did you want to announce the Mike McGrath?
Oh, right.
September 10th? Would you like me to do that?
Wait, you sponsored it.
On September 10th, at 7:30 p.m., Mike McGrath, the host of You Bet Your Garden, will be presenting, doing a presentation on mulch and all the stuff that you can do with all of your leaves and things like that. It's kind of coordinating with our opening of our leaf yard. So he'll be talking. He's the host of You Bet Your Garden on WHYY, which airs on Saturdays at 11:00 a.m. So it'll be fun.
Thank you, Martha. I think it's a great idea that you put forward.
Okay. That's it, Fred.
Thank you. Are there any more announcements from anybody on the board?
Sure. No, sir.
You're bad. Is there a public participation for anything that's on the agenda? Anything that's on the agenda now?
It's not on the agenda.
No, on the agenda?
It is on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Peter?
Yes, Peter Brown. I just had a question about the trail.
Which one?
Well, certainly the Freedom Trail is a very, would be a very desirable asset to have, given that the theory is that it would connect with the Schuylkill River Trail. However, inferring from some of the comments, I guess largely that Barbara made, that there seems to be some hesitancy about pursuing the trail going out to Dubal on the old Sugar Line. And I just wanted to hear a few more of your thoughts from some of the other supervisors here. I personally think that it would be a wonderful asset to have, not to say that there aren't a lot of problems and issues with deferred maintenance and trestles and things like that, but so, too, have there been a lot of problems and issues with development of the Schuylkill River Trail, but it will eventually, you know, connect Philadelphia with Pottsville. So I'm interested in hearing a little bit more about, you know, some of the supervisors' thoughts about whether you all feel that this is a, whether this is a desirable asset for our township.
I know Barbara and Jim have some comments on that.
Yeah, we've already commented on it.
I think it's a wonderful, trails are terrific alternatives to other kinds of activities. The question is, how realistic are the goals to making it become a reality?
Right, and I did hear you say that you have to be realistic, but I almost sense a hesitancy about even pursuing it. Is that inaccurate on my part?
It's not inaccurate in the sense that there is hesitancy, but it's based on the reality of my having contacted Norfolk Southern and asked them about the very fact of, despite the fact of the line being not usable and the bridge is unstable, they are, for whatever their reasons, at this point in time, not about to give up their right of way for a trail. Because I asked them that.
Right, and but that's one person's interaction on whatever basis or level it occurs.
I'll give you phone numbers.
Well, you know what, Peter? This whole thing is, what they're doing is a feasibility study. And part of the monies that they receive for doing this feasibility study, one of the requirements is to hold public meetings about it. And a lot of this information is going to come out in these public meetings. And a lot of it's, whatever they find, is going to come out in their feasibility study in the end. So in the end, it may come out that Norfolk Southern isn't going to give it up, or it may come out that Norfolk Southern may give it up.
Exactly.
Nobody knows, and they won't know until the study's done.
Right, and a feasibility study certainly is a good thing, but I think Schuylkill Township's ability to support the effort, you know, is important in the process. And I'm just, you know, I'm hearing a lot of hesitancy on your part, whereas I had kind of expected that you all would be jumping all over it, you know, given that we really don't have any parks and recreation in Schuylkill Township.
It's not that we don't have any parks or recreation, it's all about cost, okay? To put a, put a trail line in, and we just had a study done two years ago, right, John?
Yeah.
Where if this trail to be put in was going to cost the taxpayers of the township $500,000 to put a trail in. It's not cost prohibitive to put a trail in it. Because you're going to, you want your taxes higher for a trail? A lot of, majority of the township taxpayers don't want to raise taxes for trails. Is there, if there's a cost way of putting a trail in, we'll look at every different avenue, but if it's going to cost higher taxes and more money, tax dollars?
Certainly, we don't want to see our taxes go any higher than they have to, but as Barbara has just pointed out, you know, a lot of grant money has been obtained for the Freedom Trail, and there's been tons of grant money that's been had to develop the Schuylkill River Trail through our Rails to Trails program. So there's going to be opportunities for, I would like to think, you know, some grants for something like this.
And always, the first step before obtaining any grant money from any entity, be it state or county or federal, is to get a feasibility study completed.
Thank you, Barbara. You just took the words right out of my mouth.
I don't disagree with that.
So there's...
But like I said, you know, the ability of some of this stuff happening lies with you and your attitude towards it, that you're going to turn people off.
I don't think we were even ready for a feasibility study.
Pete, I think all of us on the board are okay with getting the feasibility study done. And it's getting the feasibility study, then reading it, reviewing it, and then deciding whether it's cost prohibitive enough for us to spend the money or go out and get grants. Remember, if, from what I remember from the last, if we go out and get grant money, it has to be ADA compliant. Now with this Freedom Trail that's going to be running through some people's backyards, do they want a concrete path running through their backyard? Probably nine times out of 10, people are going to tell you no. I mean, would you want a nine, an eight, a six-foot path or whatever the width of a path, concrete, paved?
Absolutely not, but we're talking about a railroad bed that already exists.
Well, part of the Freedom Trail is not going to be part of the railroad.
Yeah, but I'm not...
Well, we don't, the Freedom Trail is...
We're talking about the...
Yeah, two separate things. The Dubal line is separate.
Is that, yeah, Dubal and Freedom?
Yeah, the Freedom Trail will be through the Freedoms Foundation.
Yeah.
Eastman's from there, from the Valley Forge University, the former Christian Conference Senator.
Yeah.
Morris Quigg, who was on our Planning Commission, is on the task force. He knows folks at the Girl Scout Council.
Okay.
So it's...
But then you got all the other residents back along.
Well, we haven't figured out exactly how we're going.
Yeah, all right.
And there probably won't be a lot of residential things involved, but there's some, the idea here is, we can't disturb the privacy of Aqua because of federal law.
Yep.
So it's a question of how we get around and what we do and making it handicapped accessible.
It's going to be a lot more difficult, I would think, to develop the Freedom Trail as opposed to an existing railroad bed that already exists. But at any rate, you know, I'll cut to the, you know, I'll cut this short. Schuylkill Township has very little in comparison to our neighbors in terms of parks and recreation. You know, Upper Providence has a wonderful facility, you know, and there are tons of other townships around this area that have wonderful facilities, including walking trails and other things, and we have nothing. I shouldn't say nothing. We do have the start of a park out on Valley Park Road and Valley Park itself, which is great, and if this Freedom Trail ever comes to existence, that'll be a nice thing, but we don't have it.
I think it still, the whole depends on cost.
Pete, two miles down the road, we got the greatest park in the world.
But you know what?
Valley Forge National Park.
Is Valley Forge Park always going to be accessible to everybody and easy to get to?
Yeah, why not? I drive through it every single day.
So is that our park? I don't...
Well, it's everybody's park. It's federal park.
There are other townships around that have a lot of amenities in their township, and they're just as close, if not closer, to Valley Forge Park than we are.
Six miles, run it.
So I think you need to rethink your philosophy on that, because we need parks in our backyard, too.
So now what you want to do is you want to increase tax dollars by hiring park and recreation. Now you got to police them and make them secure. Then you got to build them, and it's, I would love parks. Parks would be great, recreation would be great, as long as not increasing taxes. They're raising taxes.
Unfortunately, there are a lot of decisions made by our predecessors that could have, would have, should have been done differently. For example, where Kevin lives, if the, if our predecessors had demanded that the builder put in a trail, you would be extremely close to getting to that piece of Valley Forge Park and the Schuylkill River Trail. Certain, we can't go back in time. We can only look at what the realistic opportunities that we have now in the 21st century.
I totally agree. I'm just saying you have a Rails to Trails opportunity here, and I think you ought to jump on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more public participation on any agenda items?
The noxious waste, am I going to be able to provide input, or should I make a point?
Is it, what, you want to talk about on the agenda?
Noxious weeds, I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's noxious weed control.
We haven't moved into that yet.
Will we be able to discuss that in discussion, or should I make a point now?
Yeah, at that time.
Yeah.
When we bring it up, you, I'll call on you. Okay, any legal matters, John?
Yes, Fred, the Polo briefs are in. We're waiting for a decision at the three different Township Zona Hearing Board. We have a hearing date, and the shallower arbitration is January 20th, and you mentioned the Ozerowski order. That's all I have. Thank you.
When will the Zona Hearing Board be making, it was 45 days from August 25th, correct?
There is going to be...
There was a supplemental brief date, September 2nd, so 45 days from September 2nd, we expected this.
So it's even later than we thought?
That's the outside date.
We're fighting a 188-foot tower as a neighboring township.
So all the Levin, Levine discussions are going to be in executive session due to that reason, locality wise? All right, let's move into the Horseshoe Trail Stormwater Drainage Discussion.
Yes, thank you, Fred. Back at your July meeting, you had authorized us to evaluate the drainage conditions on Horseshoe Trail in the vicinity of 1637 Jones Avenue. And we did that, and at the beginning of August, I provided a memo addressed to Mary and copied to the board and the bill. And I summarized briefly in about a page and a half what was about a month's worth of effort to spend some time out at the site. We walked Horseshoe Trail, we walked the property in question, we looked at the drainage conditions, we had some discussions with Mary and Nick, and kicked around some ideas about what might be feasible to collect stormwater and control it as it flows from the top of the mountain over about a six acre drainage area to the storm inlet that currently exists on Horseshoe Trail. And so if I, if I may, I brought basically just a blow up of the 11 by 17 diameter that you have in packets. As I said, it was about a two-page memo that summarized the analyses that we performed. And essentially what we came up, we looked at actually one primary scenario, and it was installation of an underground stormwater management system within the park, basically within the right of way of Horseshoe Trail. And that's shown here in red, and it consists of a series of 36-inch diameter pipes that would be excavated, the roadway would be excavated, these pipes would be placed in the trench, it would be backed over stone, each of the pipes is about 105 feet long. And then there would be an outpour from this underground system that would connect into the existing culvert that currently goes on the Horseshoe Drive. And then that system is designed so it would actually meter the water out of it that currently flows to the existing storm inlet on Horseshoe Trail at that location.
Just a question on nomenclature. Could that be considered a detention facility?
It is.
Okay.
It's a, it is in fact a detention facility, because it temporarily stores, it detains the water, and it releases the water at a slow rate. What we found as we analyzed the six acre drainage area is that either the topography and the geology and the development in this area, there was no feasible way to actually capture that blow up and essentially store it permanently in some type of a underground system or even an underground basin, unless you would go to an extreme situation of condemning property, which we felt was something that we certainly did not want to do and would be extremely costly to see this. So we looked at this scenario as the primary scenario. We looked at several other alternative scenarios, but this was the main one. And it accomplishes the primary goal of metering the water out so that the downstream properties, and if you, if you know this area, Horseshoe Trail is at a much higher elevation here than Continental Drive. And so as the water flows out of this pipe system, you can see this yellow dash line which indicates the proximal location of an existing stormwater drainage channel that exists on this property, which is highlighted in purple. This is 1637 Jones Avenue, and this is the resident that has complained...
Is that Brian?
That is Brock.
Brock Riffle.
Brock Riffle.
This is the resident that has complained about the drainage and the damage to his property. So this yellow dash line in the intent area of this circuit is to illustrate essentially the path that the water flows from Horseshoe Trail down to Continental Drive. And once it leaves Mr. Riffle's property, it flows across an adjacent property and finds its way to the cartway, where it then flows in this direction to a series of inlets and pipes at the intersection of Continental and...
Everybody?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Could you forgive my ignorance, but what is the depth and width of this defined channel?
It varies. It varies in dimension, I think, from a few feet wide to maybe six feet wide. It's about maybe a foot deep. In some places, it's stone lined, from what I understand. The property owner, actually when they bought this property, the previous owner had some type of a channel on the property, which I had not seen prior to very recently. But then when Mr. Riffle bought this property, he then improved the channel that's holding on. So as I said, this was the primary scenario that we looked at. We did a very, very rough order of 92 clauses, and we came up with about $244,000 to construct this system. Now the benefit is that, the stormwater benefit, is that the system will control the range of storms from what we call a two-year storm up to a 100-year storm. And a 100-year storm is a storm that has the probability of occurring, has a 1% chance of occurring in any given year. So it's a, it's a superstorm, but that doesn't mean it only happens once in 15 years. You could have a 100-year storm happen in 2014, it could happen in 2015, it could happen in 2016. But in the engineering vernacular, that's, that's the design, that's the way we design stormwater management systems, based on these design storms. So the idea is that, without getting too technical, this system would control those storms that are very frequent, but very low in intensity, all the way up to those storms that are very infrequent and very high in intensity. And it would meter the water out under a variety of conditions so that there would be no damage, no additional damage to Mr. Riffle's property. As a matter of fact, what he should see is a decrease in the flow rates, based on, if this, if this is constructed properly, he should see a decrease in the flow rates on to his property, and then subsequently downstream property should see the same. We looked at two other scenarios. They were much more costly. They're represented in the cost estimate summary that I provided to you, the scenarios two and three. They essentially don't do anything to control the flow. They just get the water through Mr. Riffle's property from Point A to Point B, and they do it by one of two ways. The first is by a series of pipes and storm inlets and manholes that would be installed on the Riffle property, then the downstream property. on the Riffle property, then the downstream property owner can connect ultimately into the system on Continental Drive. And the third option is to take the water and discharge it into a much larger open channel, a rip route, a stone lined channel, that again would convey the water through the Riffle property and down to Continental Drive, and ultimately to the stormwater system. And you can see that the cost for those two options are on the order of $460,000 and $520,000.
Right. Option, in the scenario one, the $244,000, who would benefit from this expenditure beyond Mr. Riffle, per se? And second of all, would there be grant funding available to, if you see this as a realistic option, and it benefits enough people, we're not, we can't do something just for one property owner.
Right.
But the question is, how would this improve, forgive the lay of the land and the ground?
Right.
By doing or going after grant funding to achieve this?
Well, to answer your first question, certainly the primary benefits would be to the immediate downstream property owners. There would be some secondary benefits to downstream property owners.
There would.
There would, however, understand that this is only six acres of land that would be controlled. Once the water basically leaves the Riffle property and begins to flow toward Continental Drive, now you've got much larger drainage areas that can, not just that six acres, but much larger areas on either side that contribute additional runoff to Continental Drive. So those downstream property owners may or may not see any, any real benefits.
We've had so many folks come to us over the past year or so, Penny Packer Drive, various different places in the township. You know what White Horse Road is like in certain really bad weather. My, my question is this, looking at a broad brush approach, should we take into consideration applying for a township-wide comprehensive approach to stormwater management? Instead of trying to do things piecemeal, I, I would rather we try to find the right funding to help us find the right answer, so we can prioritize where the worst problems are likely to be with a 100-year flood, or whatever, even, even just a bad rainstorm. It's, it's just, my feeling is that we've had so many different streets, and not to make one homeowner feel bad by saying, well, we can't do anything to help you, I would love to see us embark on a comprehensive approach. It's just my two cents.
To answer your second question, I haven't had a chance to look into any grant funding sources for you. I can certainly do that, but this past month I've been tied up with a few other...
But thank you for presenting it in the way that you did. As always, you do a great job.
I just, if I could make a couple of comments on this. First of all, I got, basically I've got a question here in terms of the tables, and what, when you look at the pipe diameters, you've got a quantity opposite them that's greater than one, considerably greater than one.
Right.
Like 420 opposite the 36-inch pipe. What does that mean?
That's 420 millimeter 36-inch pipe. That's the, that's the four segments of pipe that I described earlier.
Okay.
And then there's a 15-feet, 15-inch diameter pipe, which could be discharged from the secondary system.
Okay. The second question I had is, one of the, the notes here for scenario one is that a water main relocation may be required.
Right. Is that water for refined hydrogen? From what, from what I understand from Nick, there's an actual, there's a total waterline on Horseshoe Trail.
Really?
And it actually runs down the, thank you, Senator, the state. So, yeah, there would be some cost involved in relocating that line to the county system.
Yeah.
And I tried to, tried to account for, you know, as many unforeseen situations like that as we could think of. And I also threw in what we thought was a reasonable excavation cost, probably more than what you would have if this were not on the top of the mountain, the shallow bedrock that is this here. And threw in a 50% contingency factor, simply because, you know, this, this is essentially a, you know, the first bracket at, at a concept, it's a cartoon for all kinds of purposes. So, to give, you know, to give you a hard and fast cost estimate at this point in time is a little bit like, you know, pulling the number out here or so.
On the topography, John, is it reasonable to, it, it strikes me that at that, at that point, we've basically got a swell, because that's where the drain is, right?
Yes, right here at the curve, the roadway is where the lower one is.
Yeah, and, and so that, that follows the natural, roughly follows the natural contours of the land, right?
Right.
Okay. So, I guess I'm thinking that that's, over time, would have a buildup of loose material that would be not present on high points of the ridges. So, that would mean, if that were true, that would, should help reduce the excavation cost or...
If it's possible, yeah. Obviously, without any, without doing any geotechnical studies, some soil boring, subsurface investigations, there'd be no way for us to know that at this point in time.
Thank you for educating us. I, I would like to ask my colleagues to think about how we approach a comprehensive way of looking at all of this. Mary, I know you and I have talked about this, and you've had some good ideas, and, I mean, we can see from these costs of just one place on one homeowner's hillside, how expensive it is. So, how do we prioritize the seriousness of the stormwater runoff, the number of people affected by it, where it is geographically, and the cost and the likelihood of ever getting grant funding to deal with it? And it's like putting in a trail, you have to figure out how something is going to work for the greatest number of people, I think. Mary?
Most of what's out there that I have seen in digging around, looking for grants, were not grants, they are low-interest loans for this type of thing. It is not grant money.
For a plan.
For construction.
Okay.
Not so much for a plan.
But how can then, how do we approach the idea or the conceptual framework of a township comprehensive plan for stormwater management?
You have to write a policy or an ordinance to move, move forward.
I don't, I don't think, well, we're, we're going to...
And what's already been developed is developed. We can't keep going back and paying money out to people, because we just don't have the monies in this township.
If I could, the, the critical thing here, I think, we probably could agree, is the limit, the geographic limitation that we may impose on ourselves relative to where we can actually put stormwater in.
Sure.
If it's within the right-of-way, that's a limiting factor in a number of situations that I can think of, not, not on the map. So, but we're going to be voting on that, so that's the next step.
Okay. I was just trying to, is it feasible to think of your coming up with a comprehensive plan for us, so that we can be educated, what can be done, and where, at what cost, for how many people?
Well, there's, if, if the board is so inclined to consider a township-wide stormwater management study, to answer your question, if it can be done, yes, it can be done.
That's my next, was my next thing.
Absolutely, it can be.
What monies do you want to...
It's not, it's not...
Put through that.
A easy process, it's not a quick process, it's a labor-intensive, and it's a long process to...
What do you figure something like that would cost, John?
Fred, it would depend on the scope of the study.
Yeah.
It really would. And that's something that I can't, I can't even begin to, to give you a number on right now.
John, can you, can we, can we as a board then request that you go back and come back to us next month with a figure, what, two or three different costs, and what that would entail?
Hey, Fred, can I, can I just interrupt you for a second? When they did the Penny Packer study, that was $90,000? It was expensive, over two...
And that took two and a half years? And that was just a Penny Packer study?
One street.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but we, we, next, once we get the cost, then we can, we can, we could develop right now, say, have him not only with the cost, give us a time element of what each would take.
Can we bring this up for the budget? Can we have this?
Yes.
Can we, John, work up some figures and some time on it?
That's what I'm saying.
So that we can have it for the budget, not necessarily for next month's meeting, but so I can plunk it into the budget for a budget meeting.
Meanwhile, I also suggest that perhaps between now and the next board meeting, maybe we, a few of us, you know, get together...
Either, which would be easier, which would be easier for you, the budget?
Well, certainly the budget meeting would be easier, but what I'm saying is, I think we need to, we need to, a few of us need to sit down and figure out, do you want to look at the entire township, or do you want to prioritize certain watersheds within the township, or certain areas within the township?
I think the entire township.
Okay, and if that's what you want to do, then there are some other questions that I have for you that I don't want to take the time now to go into, because they're more detailed and technical in nature, but I would need to understand from you, to what level of detail you want to get into.
As far as I'm concerned...
Some of us don't even know how to answer...
As far as I'm concerned, John, it would be the entire township, because we would want to be fair to all our residents.
Okay. All right.
A question for Mary and John. Going back in time, when Lee Lebeder was on the board, there was, I think he was the instigator of this, a stormwater study of Valley Forge Mountain.
Jug Hollow Watershed.
It was Jug Hollow, it was a portion, there was a portion of Jug Hollow watershed where Jug Hollow Road and Oakwood Lane intersect. There was a study done, and we did that study at the time, and it was a similar situation, and we looked at condemning a piece of ground, and the cost to install a above-ground stormwater management detention basin was about a half a million dollars at that point. And that was about a decade ago.
Well...
Yeah, just about, yeah.
And Penny Packer solution was almost the same, wasn't it?
You agree with that?
Penny Packer was several hundred thousand dollars.
To come back to cost.
Yes.
I don't think it needs a motion. All right, John, I don't think it needs a motion. I think that what we would like you to do is make that...
Some more work.
Well, I'll get with Mary, and we'll, we'll take it from here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Now, now, is there anything else for John? I'm going to excuse John from the meeting due to some health problems. So, is there anything else anybody wants to bring up to John? Goodbye.
Thank you very much.
See you, John.
Okay, good night, everyone.
One last thing, you check with Chris Green in term, and your availability for our first task force meeting in September?
Yes.
Not next week, but maybe the following week.
Will do.
Thanks.
All right, the next thing, item on the agenda is noxious weed control discussion. Discussion only. Somebody want to start it?
Did I sneeze?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll just make one brief comment. I said, we did respond to the residents' request to, to take some kind of action on this, this issue, and we did contact the Agriculture Department, and they did identify Canadian thistle as a noxious weed. And that's about where it stands right now. And we're talking about the area next to, at the intersection, basically, of Route 29 and Pot House Road, that, that large property there.
Did Harrisburg get back to us?
Not a letter, your practice letter almost came through, that she responded to the township. The Ms. Lecker from the Department of Ag will be contacted to look in, see if, you know, they will do some, nicely ask them to do some.
Mr. McCurry, do you have a...
Did they give them a timeframe in that letter?
I just wanted to let you know that we actually sent the letter out that Mary had given us to all the residents. So, I guess my question is, how many of those do you need? And should I follow up with all of them? Because do we know if they'll even look at them? Just a question.
I'm sorry, do you...
We, we sent the letter out to the 50 homeowners, 48 homeowners, correct?
What letter was that, Peter?
So, will, will you know, or will anybody know how many actually...
I sent to, excuse me, Peter, I'm sorry. I sent to property owners that were here at the last meeting, the noxious weed complaint form from the state.
Okay.
And asked them to complete the form, because on the form it says, how has your property, property been affected? And asked them to send them to the state. I did ask the Department of Ag how many she has received, she has not gotten me back, so I'm not sure how many she actually got.
Okay, so, so, all right, well, that's good to know, because I'll make sure that, you know, I get on the phone and I tell them.
Do we have a contact, so it's used the same person as Jessica Lecker?
Yeah, but I'll, I'll find out how many she's actually received from those.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Any, any other discussion on this?
Yes, sir.
I think the larger the number of people, to fill that person's desk, be like spreading weeds around.
Right.
They got to deal with it, a bunch of paper from a large number of people, the more they receive, it's that squeaky wheel to hopefully get attention.
Well, we're having a picnic next week, so I'll make sure everybody knows again, just to make sure they get it.
Thank you.
Well, we need to make some definitive action, maybe not tonight, but we got to resolve something to help these people out.
We all agree.
Okay.
I think, I think we can discuss that in the next session, Fred.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything more in old business?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're moving into new business. The motion to approve the 2015 financial requirement...
I didn't get a chance to say anything yet.
It's, you will later on, when we have public participation.
Well, it says here, on the, on the old business, weed control, then it has Overstreet Mobile Home Park, and all the other three things, four things that I've got listed.
Doesn't have...
You have last month.
You have last month, you have the wrong month's agenda.
Well, she said it was going to be the same thing that, because I didn't make the meeting.
You didn't show up last month, sir.
You didn't show up, you didn't come.
But you told me that if I wanted the same things, and I said yes, and you said, yeah, that's what I'll do.
I'm sorry, forgot to put it on the agenda.
Oh, you forgot, yeah, right, you forgot, right. Sure you did.
Please.
All right, let's move on, you can talk at the end.
Okay, well, now, in the public participation part.
Thanks, Jim. Under new business, motion to approve the 2015 financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation for the police and non-uniform pension plans.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. The next item is a motion to approve advertising for equipment rental and snow removal bids for 2014 and 2015. Do I hear a motion?
You make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved. Motion to approve whitetail associates to hunt the Pickering Preserve on specific dates from September through January during bow hunting season, and you...
I'll, I'll make that motion, Fred.
And you have a report giving it. It's, we've had the motion, it's been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Resolutions and ordinances. The first item is motion to authorize circulation of the draft public facilities zoning ordinance, the PFD, or amendment to the County Planning Commission, the Township Planning Commission, and the Regional Planning Commission for their respective 30-day reviews. Do I hear...
We, we need to see the draft, Fred.
Okay.
Good evening, Andrew Bellmore, on behalf of the school district. We met with staff, the zoning liaison, with the consultants, we revised the language as requested, we circulated that toward the end of this month, and I think you have that before you. There's one open issue, that is the gallonage associated with the fuel tanks that might be on one of these properties. I understand also that Supervisor Morrison has some comments.
Yeah, I somehow didn't, I didn't check my emails at the last minute. I, I don't have the change, the changes. I, I don't have the change, the changes in front.
You have copies, Andy.
I have copies.
Just so the board understands, and your packet is the draft that followed our meeting, Supervisor Morrison made some suggested changes he'd like to discuss, and it's up to the board to decide exactly what they wish to send around for circulation.
Great, thank you.
And there is a black line.
Yep.
Of what we had submitted.
This is called the Morrison Amendments.
As reviewed by our solicitor. All right, just, just, as I went over this draft one last time, per, as, as a result of our, our group meeting on this whole thing, I noticed some things that we, I thought we'd agreed on that weren't, weren't reflected in the, in the draft, so there was a discussion between myself and Bill about this, and then Bill communicated to Mr. Bellmore, and he kindly created to, offered to revise the draft. So, let me, let me go through the significant changes, they're really not that significant. First thing is, we're talking about the public facility zone. One of the holdovers of permitted uses in, in this is golf courses. Well, we don't have any room for golf courses in the public facility zone, and it's not, it's just not, it's just not, the room's not there, okay? So, so I think that we can eliminate that particular permitted use.
Just one second, Jim, let me try to clarify the Morrison amendments to simplify this in full order, okay? Forgive me here, but I just want to move this along. The first thing that was suggested was a, basically a typographical change in Section 1A. The zeros that were in front of the fives are apparently not accepted by the Recorder of Deeds, and those zeros have been removed. That's what this whole issue is in Section 1, just basically a typographical correction. Is that correct, Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
All right. The next item is in Section 307, 115, and I don't mean that this is your thing, but I want to move it along here. 370, 115A, five, the phrase "including the uses identified" in 370, 132H is identified there, and the reason for that was just clarity, because it identifies the, with more particularity, the accessory uses, doesn't change anything, it was just a point of clarification.
To clarify the clarification, that's section six in this, in this ordinance, to change the ordinance, so you can flip to page three and see what I'm talking about.
All right, the next thing that was discussed was under Section 2B, and Mr. Morrison suggested the following things, that golf courses should be removed as a possible conditional use, and that everything else should be renumbered, and that there should just be a changing of, of the order of things, putting the accessory use item last, where it probably should be in terms of good draftsmanship, and I think that was the only.
Fire station.
And Jim suggested removing a fire station.
Because there's one across the street.
Well, his point, I think, was that instead of making it a conditional use decided by this board, the fire station should, should preferably go to the zoning hearing board, so the fire station was removed down one notch to Section C. Have I stated that correctly?
Yes. And, and the thinking there was that, that this is a serious public concern, and yes, there's politics, but an objective analysis of any proposed moving or, or additional fire station should, I think should be done by the zoning hearing board. And by the way, keep in mind that a special exception is, is not, is normally, and you can confirm this before that, is normally granted if, if there's, if there's not an issue of public health, welfare, and safety. Well, the fire station's all about safety, so they got one up on that already, if it ever happens. We have two fire stations now, I can't envision a third.
I hope not.
We are looking at, I mean, I'm like, my only concern is down the road, in five, seven, ten years, when they build the new fire station at the existing spot, there's no issues going forward.
No.
They have to go to zoning hearing board, anything like that.
Well, well, that's, that's, that's for, this only affects the public facility zone, this change.
Okay.
Okay. The current, the fire engine's located in the R1 district.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's a separate discussion.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure.
On page, on page four, the next item is simply filling in the gallonage, and I think we talked about a thousand gallons, Andy, was that correct?
Yes, I think there's an issue as to what's on the township properties presently.
Right.
Mary, can you speak to that?
If you put a thousand gallons in here, as the top aggregate, I think is the word that you're using, does this township complex become non-conforming? Because we have more than just a thousand gallons.
What do you mean, our, our complex?
Yeah, we have two thousand gallons.
It would become, it would become non-conforming, but you wouldn't have to remove the existing tanks, they could stay, but any new tanks would have to be a thousand gallons or smaller.
So what you're saying is our, our, our tanks are larger than a thousand?
No, they're a thousand gallons apiece.
We have a 500 gallon diesel tank, we have two 1,000 gallon propane tanks for this building, 1,000 gallon propane tank for the road department, 120 gallon propane tank for the EOC, plus two 900 gallon tanks for magnesium chloride. We have a lot of tanks. So, when you're talking about a thousand gallon aggregate, are you?
No, it's not aggregate, it says, any fueling tank does not exceed a thousand, so a thousand's your limit for any tank.
Any fueling store, okay, so if we were to add another one?
Less than a thousand, you're in.
Okay, we'll make it a 900 gallon tank.
All right. And then finally, Andy, the, the last item had to do with Section 817, and I didn't really understand all of that, had to do with parking.
Right.
And we had our discussion, we talked about the requirement of one parking space for every thousand square feet, and then when this topic came up, the question was whether added to that should be a second category for one space for every employee. Now, as I understand, there's something about whether that's for accessory uses or permitted uses.
Right, so, so we have, we're meeting the requirement that exists now, you'll find that in prior section, Section 4 there, that we're actually providing 244 spaces, and we need about 204 for our specific project. However, when we discussed it with staff, Mary Lou from Gilmore Associates suggested that maybe the township want to, wanted to have a provision in there for recreation and commercial uses as a primary use. So, really doesn't affect us so long as, everybody, Mary Lou, Gilmore is the key person, so long as they look at our project as a primary use being the school, and secondary use being trails and rec facilities.
You don't care if it's in or not?
I do not.
All right, and Mary Lou seemed to prefer, prefer it being in?
Yes.
All right, well, then why don't we leave it in?
Leave it in.
And, so, I'm not for this or against this, I, I told Jim I'd help him get through it, those are his suggestions, they can be accepted or rejected in, en masse or individually by the board, or, and you can enact what was proposed in the, in your packet, or you can enact, enact the Morrison amendment. The, the, the changes are just minimal.
Okay, I think they get the point.
So, you're okay, and you're okay. I make a motion to approve en masse the Morrison amendment.
I'll second.
Does that include the one that Bill took out?
What we're doing in the Morrison amendment is that we are leaving in the last item that we talked about in terms of parking, so the.
Section 8.
Section 8.
Section 8, even though it is blacklined in the Morrison draft, it, that stays as it was.
By the way, I never blacklined it, though.
Okay. Well, my motion was predicated on the fact that both our legal count, both the school district council and our council are on the same page with this.
I understand that.
So, that's why I made the motion.
Somebody second?
I seconded it.
Oh, Jim seconded it.
Any, any discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you. Appreciate the openness and the feedback from the township.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Unless the board has anything else for me?
If you want to stand.
Next item is the motion to approve advertising of an ordinance updating the cable franchise agreement between Schuylkill Township and Comcast of Pennsylvania LCC.
Make that motion.
I should let you know that Mary's read it, I've read it, and, excuse me, Martha's read it, and we agree that it should be approved. And Bill, and Bill has read it.
I'll second, I'll second Kevin's motion.
I got a question for, for Mary, if she could, too. Can you give us a thumbnail as to what the changes are in this?
The changes are basically that this will, once this is enacted, will help increase our franchise fees, because as you've seen in this, the last time that we did anything with franchise.
1960.
With Comcast, which was, was then suburban cable, was in 1965.
Wow.
So we needed to update our cable franchise agreement with Comcast for that's one. Number two, we are not getting franchise fees on the gross revenues, which is basically what we're choosing now, as you see the definition for gross revenues, we're getting our franchise fees based on that. So this is basically just updating our franchise agreement with them. We've been, what, a year and a half working on this?
And we have a special lawyer doing it, and.
Yeah, yes. So, we've gone by, I think this is, um.
We got a grant to pay for the special attorney, that's why it wasn't really to go through you, so they were recommended or something like that with this grant, so.
Stop it, you don't like that.
That's true.
Will this affect our tower that we're putting up?
No.
No, no. It's not going to work.
All right, I've had the motion, it's been seconded, I think.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. The next item is motion to approve Resolution 2014-11 regarding township repair of water drainage and stormwater drainage issues on private property. My comment is, we got to be careful, why, why don't we, if you're thinking about it, why don't we recommend to do a policy on it if, if we want to go that far?
I don't really understand what this is trying to say.
Essentially, it is, it is a policy, basically, a resolution.
It is a policy?
Yeah.
Yes, a right general guideline, Fred, as to how the township should deal with these requests. They come in from every direction at different times, the only consistent point in all of them is that they're each incredibly expensive, and without getting too deeply into the weeds here, the law generally is that water problems on private property that are not caused by the local government are not the responsibility of the local government, and that's going to be, seem harsh to some people like this gentleman that John was talking about before. The only place that the township may, under appropriate circumstances, have any responsibility has to do with its own roadways and its, and the right of ways, where we've done something, water flows downhill, and it will always flow downhill, and we can't stop it. But what we're seeing is a lot of property owners requesting the township go on their property, fix their water problem. This is a general statement of policy that, hey, you know, we, we are a government, we are another bankruptcy court, and, you know, we can't solve everybody's problem.
You saw John's presentation here, okay? He, he proposed a, a, a solution to metering stormwater, which currently is affecting multiple private properties.
True.
So, how does that square with the third whereas here, the township is not legally responsible to manage, repair, or remove water drainage problems on private, on private property?
Protect it.
It's, it's, it's the, it's the manage, remove, that, that's, that's, lose the words I have, problem.
I'm just reciting what the law is, Jim, I mean, the law is that.
You sure?
The township has the right.
What, what law is that, Bill?
It's the common law of Pennsylvania that we are not legally, we as a government are not legally responsible to fix problems on private property.
Thank you.
That's the law, it's very simple, it's not, it's not complex. Now, the, the government.
The blanket, the blanket statement.
Yeah, and, and the government has a right to fix, to do those things, might be politically unwise to spend a quarter million dollars on one person's property, but I'll leave that to, to your judgment, but in terms of whether you're obligated to do so, the answer is no. And I felt it might be appropriate to have something you could point to when people knock on your door and say, please fix the water problem, you know, on my property. So, this doesn't say that no water problems will be addressed or will be studied, it just recites what the law is, which is that if you have a private property with a water problem not caused by the township, then generally speaking, there may be exceptions, generally speaking, it's not the township's responsibility.
So, that phrase, "not caused by the township," is implicit in this resolution?
Well, sure.
Yes, of course. My question is.
So, so the, on the, on the flip side of that, if it is caused by the township, then we have, we, we, we can choose to do something or not choose to do something?
No, if it's caused by us, and if someone complains and proves it's our fault, then there may be a legal duty to act.
Okay.
But, you know, we're not there in any of these cases.
But, in this one example that, that John showed us on Orchard Trail, does that, that, I, I think that concords with this resolution, doesn't it? If we were to go ahead and do that?
I have to understand more about the origin of the problem, what caused it, there was a lawsuit about, it's your law property, isn't it? I don't want to get into it, there was a lawsuit about that, where the property owner actually took the township and announced to court and lost.
Okay, all right, and this is, that was meant to be an example, not, not necessarily specific, okay? It's, it's an example of, of addressing the problem within the right of way, not on private property. So is that, is this resolution okay with that?
No, I, if, if, if it's a township problem caused by the township, then it seems to me that you wouldn't be violating your policy, but, you know.
So, my, to follow up, as a, as a postscript to Jim's point, with regard to the word private property, I don't want to fix one person's pri, privately owned property, but would this prohibit us from going onto a private property if a large number of homeowners in that vicinity would be negatively affected if we couldn't help by virtue of approving this?
No, not, can you, no, you're not, this is not.
You see what I'm getting at?
Yeah, this is not an ordinance that you're legally bound by, this is a resolution which is a statement of policy, and it's something you can point to, in my opinion, if, if people come in and say, I've got other water problem, fix it. They say, well, where's the problem? They go, in my backyard. The answer is, well, as a general policy matter, we don't spend township's taxpayer dollars to fix water problems in your backyard. That's all this says, in my opinion.
Okay.
So we have the right, but not the responsibility?
Yeah, well, sure, if, if, in my opinion, it may not be wise, but if a person comes in and says, fix my water problem, and you spend a quarter million dollars to do so, taxpayers might be a little annoyed, and they may, you know, they may.
Would this have a?
Okay, I'm okay with this, this resolution, but I, if, if some minor editorial changes are made to this paragraph one, but the, the last two lines of that, starting with because the township, that's a repetition of what the whereas is, is above, it's redundant, and I think we just take that out.
No, I don't. I think it's got to be left in.
It's redundant, whereas the town, if you, we got to, whereas the township above is not legally respons, come on, Barbara, where the township is not legally responsible to manage, repair, or remove, you know, that's, that's essentially the legally responsible phrase down here. I mean, you got to basically go back and forth and read it, and, and the cost of the efforts could overwhelm the budget, well, you know.
I agree with.
I don't, I don't like, I don't like the, the ending of that.
Well, I do.
And, and then the other, the other is, after, after the Schuylkill Township, the first line there, as a matter of general policy, Schuylkill Township cannot and will not. The cannot, if, 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 if we're the cause of a, of a problem, and the only solution is to repair the problem, and this is another hypothetical, the only solution is to repair the, the problem on private property as well as public property.
Well, if we're the cause of the problem, you're right, it's implicit.
So the cannot, the cannot, it's not property.
Whatever, I'm not pushing this, I have no agenda, I simply drafted it in response to some issues that came up, and, you know, I'm not going to argue with you, Jim, about it, because it's not my job, I presented it, and, you know, you can vote for it or against it or seek to change it, I really have no dog in this one.
One of the things that the board may want to keep in mind, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, if we start doing work on private property, stormwater or otherwise, we may end up owning that, and having to repair it down the line, and maintain it and everything else. We don't want to go down that road.
My, my proposed change is. My proposed changes, Mary, are not contrary to that. The thrust of the resolution...
Go ahead and draft, and we'll take a look at it and ask, you know...
Do we want to table this?
Make your changes, and we discuss it next month.
All right.
Just table it. I mean, we've tabled it for two months already. What's the other one?
However, I want both of them to appear on the agenda. This policy plus the one Mr. Morrison's going to write.
Thank you, Fred.
I see there's no problem with this.
So we have a good comparison.
That's correct. All in favor of that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there actually a limitation on that?
We'll vote on it sometime next year.
As the builder's responsibility, there's something to vote on.
With regards to...
The next item is...
Your grant looks nice and green.
Your grant looks nice and green.
Next item is a motion to approve resolution 2014-12 authorizing the submiddle of the Pico Green Region 10th Anniversary Bonus Round Grant for $10,000 for the addition of an environmental education area in the Pickering Preserve.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just a brief comment. We did something like this before, did we not, Mary? For Pico Green Region on another matter?
Yes.
Yeah. They need a resolution from us.
Yes.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If you'll turn your agenda over, there's another item. There'll be two items. The motion to approve resolution 2014-13 regarding the Valley Forge Christian College obtaining university status. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
I hear a second. Any discussion?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So moves.
Barbara, will you be present to give them this?
Yes, I'll get back to it. Dr. Mortensen had communicated with me this morning, and I wrote a draft. And Mary, thank you for adding all the whereas. It's in you, Fred, too. So now we have it in official township language. And I'll give him a call tomorrow.
Okay.
The next item is Mr. James Keller, who wants to give us some information. Mr. Keller?
Public participation, yes.
Just a couple of comments about the weeds, though.
Okay.
One, the ordinance does have a height limit on weeds. Also, we also have the Noxious and Toxic Act with regards to weeds. I also would like to know why the township has a fenced-in area of weeds across from Schuylkill. That doesn't make any sense at all. There's about a 20 or 30-foot fenced-in area of weeds.
That's the green fence, the one right along Pot House Road?
Right, yeah.
We don't own that. That's not us. That's either Aqua or the Valley Forge Sewer Authority owns that. Yeah, there's a section they both own. Aqua owns a piece of...
What I'm concerned about is pond or anything else blowing across to the school where kids are coming into the school. Young kids, and young kids are more susceptible to this situation. I just can't believe... It doesn't make any sense why you have this fence. And the last one is, when you come from Bridge Creek, east on Pot House Road, everything is great until you get to the last 30 or 40 yards. I can't believe that the township can't force this guy to cut these weeds down.
We're trying.
We're trying. That is... We're...
Keller, were you ever in the Army?
No, I lucked out. I got married.
All right, well, if you're in the Army, when you're planning a campaign, do you go on television to explain your campaign?
Not really. Well, it depends. At least I'm glad that you're taking this attention that maybe hopefully you'll get this guy to... Because I'm come to a point that maybe I'll get down there with a picket sign.
Better yet, a mower.
Asking this guy to cut the weeds down.
Can't go for a mower. The Noxious weed is...
You get a lot of westerly winds, and it blows towards the park in that area of the township.
Is...
And there's no sense to it.
No, a Noxious weed is on a very high list of the township. It's a major discussion that would happen.
Yeah, this has been going on for years.
Understandable.
Okay. Moving into... These are the ordinance of the township with regard to mobile homes. 32052, grading, evacuation, erosion, and sediment control. I don't want to get into that one too much. The next one is 53, which says the park is supposed to have service buildings, recreation buildings, and other common services. And when you go under that section, you find out it talks about management, repair shops, storage areas, laundry facilities, indoor recreation areas, commercial uses supplying essential goods or services for the exclusive use of the park occupants. The next one goes in, it says, "There must be portable fire extinguishers shall be provided and maintained in public service and under park control." There are no... They've never had any fire extinguishers in that park. Never. It goes on to say hybrids and fire suppression. I haven't looked into that one yet further. But 32054 says, "A recreation area shall be constructed and maintained within the park for the use of all the park residents." What a joke. They've never had any recreation. Never constructed anything. I tried to get Jim Overstreet to do it. I tried to get the Pfeiffers to do it. And then what he told me? Never. Never. This is all in your ordinances. Number 56, erection of single mobile homes. All mobile homes erected and maintained as single-family dwellings shall conform with the folly. The lot upon which the mobile home is installed shall conform to the minimum lot size requirements of the applicable zoning district, which is us. The mobile homes shall meet all property yard, side yard, and rear yards set back lines to single and family dwellings in that district. They put two new homes on Terrace Drive. They don't have no backyard. 25% of the home is out in space. At the corners of the home, they've got bricks, piled up bricks, maybe five feet high. And I'm concerned about soil erosion. Not only that, if there's a tremor or a quake, then them homes are going to be damaged, very severely damaged. I told all this to Mr. ... The guy from Yurkies. He didn't think it was that problem. Can you imagine 25% of your home is out here in space, and at the corners, there's a five-foot bricks? That's where it's sitting down on that. That's where the structure is. And I'll tell you, that is completely... It's just not possible that they could do something about that, and nobody says anything about it. But Mr. Pfeiffer has a lot of influence, so he can get away with quite a bit. Okay. The mobile home shall be installed upon and securely fastened to a foundation or footer which extends below the forest line. And not... There shouldn't be any jacks or loose blocks or any other temporary material.
Mr. Keller, do you have a copy of what you're reading to us?
It's in your code book.
Oh, no, but I don't know. You're going all the... Through these codes. What I'd like to do is save a whole lot of people time. I will take that... I will research it, and I will call you personally on it. So if you can give me that information, give it to me.
I'll give you it.
And I'll go home and get my codes book out.
Yeah, I'll give you where they're at, and you can look into the thing, okay?
We can highlight what...
We're running out of time, sir.
Yeah, highlight what codes that you want. Or if you have that...
Well, I'll give it to you. I'll bring it down to you.
Oh, great.
I'll just go through what I got here and bring it to you.
There's a gentleman over here. Do you have anything you and him want to talk about? Sitting over next to him.
So you'll know where to go with it.
Sitting next to Faderman.
Maybe use a file.
No. Okay.
Okay. In your ordinances, you have prohibited acts...
We do have a finite amount of time.
An ordinance, okay.
The maintenance of any dangerous structure. This is under 230-3. Any dangerous structure, including buildings or parts of buildings, in a state of dilapidation and disrepair. The Pfeiffers have two buildings over on 29 that have been that way for years. Nobody has taken action against them, and what this has done, they were not even secured. We have had a cat problem for three years. We finally got it under control because we had a resident who was willing to trap the cats. He trapped over 30 cats. This was a breeding ground for these cats because it was open. It was open. Along with the people who were feeding the strays, which they ain't supposed to do. They have a great set of rules in the park, but they don't live there. And this situation was caused, this dangerous situation, because they got diseased. I don't know how many died over the last years. But they were a danger to kids in the park. And the big thing, the other big thing was the abandoned homes. Why are these abandoned homes still there? Why isn't anybody doing anything about them?
He has to go to Overstreet.
Also, the filling up of any swell or drainage ditch, that's in your ordinances. Any use of land that causes discomfort to the residents of the township. I'm going to go back to the Overstreet case between Overstreet and the township. Went on for years, and finally the township won. I mean, it was no doubt... I mean, Overstreet didn't have a leg to stand on, but he had the money to keep appealing. Well, anyway, 1980, and I talked to the judge who made this ruling yesterday, Lawrence Wood. He's in private practice now. 34 years, there was things that they had to do. Get... Take the pads out of the ground. Take out the sewer lines and the water lines, the electrical lines, the telephone lines. All those people that were there after 1983, they had to go. What a thing that somebody says, "I'm in a home, you got to go." And that... But that's... And then the judge says, "If a home is in that illegal area, the ones that were allowed to stay, if the house is not being occupied, it's to be moved out or torn down." We have a guy who's been there for nearly two years now. He comes once a month to pay the rent and for the cost of cutting the grass. He has a poor neighbor that's right next to him. The house is filled with trash. Trash. It's so filled that on one side, you can see it bulging. Why hasn't the township taken action against this? That home does not belong to be there. It should have been moved out, just like the judge said. If it's not being occupied, it should be moved out. And if you don't believe me, you can call Lawrence Wood. I'll give you his phone number.
Can we...
I talked to him yesterday. 34 years, and nothing has been done, and the Pfeiffers just... They just have no regard for anything. Even when the judge makes a decision, they don't have any regard. And he said...
Mr. Keller, are you pointing down here because we have like a two or three minute...
Okay, the judge says the township should have done something, taken action against them. And I said, "Well, what happens if they don't?" And they said, "Well, you'll have to get it lawyers and take action yourself." But I'm just telling you, why after 34 years, after you spent tax power, taxpayer dollars to win this case?
I didn't handle the case. You're looking at me?
No, I'm not looking at you. I'm just telling you.
I think it's better if you have summarized things for us...
Okay, I won't...
And you've already documented things to Mary, and it's better in... As opposed to giving a narrative, it is much better if you document, bring it in to Mary so that we can then take action with Yurkies.
Well, you have a copy of the case.
I'm not trying to do anything other than to guide you through the process in a better way than the longevity of your speech this evening.
Well, these things have been going on for years, and you can know the frustration that is with some people. Imagine that poor guy living next to this situation.
Understandable.
Please try to summarize what you have to...
Thank you.
Okay, I won't go on to any other things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll wait till next month.
I think you could benefit by responding to my colleague's request.
Well, I'll give him, yes. I told him I'll give him the ordinances, the numbers, and he can look at it.
Yep. Because what, in essence, you're talking about is adhering to our ordinances, which have standards for mobile homes. Right?
Yes, that's what it is. They're your ordinances for mobile homes.
Okay.
If Mr. Yurkies, the guy for Yurkies was doing his job, he'd know what's going on.
Do we have anything under the following items, subdivision land development, two-minute reports, additional business?
You want to jump in on that one?
Anybody have additional business?
I just want to...
Anything more on public participation?
Yeah.
Participate?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm representing our community, and I just wanted to express the concern again that we had with what the school district is doing in their construction. I went to the grounds, building and grounds meeting last night and listened to the school board members discuss what their plans are. And they made some changes because of some of the neighbors, that they moved that building in their plans to another area because it was affecting the landowners. But more importantly, they also mentioned that they had this super...
Fund.
Super, what they call it?
Fund.
What is it?
Easement, not easement. Right of way, I'm sorry. A super right of way, which I've never heard before, and said that they were... Will be able to take the property and, you know, make it a road. And they said that this was in the plan, so that's a little concerning to me because, you know, when we were...
What are you talking about?
He's talking about the ultimate right of way on his side. And there's an offer for dedication of that ultimate right of way was made with the development process, whenever it was developed. And the districts would like to widen the road on their side. So there's a question about offering for dedication, whether that can, should, or would be done. Because if they do it on that side, it's a clear shot all the way down as opposed to widening on the other side where there are a bunch of homes that they have to deal with.
That would make sense. It wouldn't interfere with their trail or anything, would it?
Sure, but, you know, I haven't looked at it yet.
Well, if you look at it, if they move it 10 feet in, first of all, they're going to displace the fence that's there, okay? So, I mean, they put that in our budget that we would have to replace it at $20,000.
But they would have to...
Farming?
If they move it, if they cause the fence to be moved, it's my opinion, they'd have to replace the fence.
Well, that's not what they said. They said last night, "It would be our responsibility for that removal as well as for the landscaping."
Well, let's see where it goes.
But, see, that's my concern, is that they... The way that they come across, and even the way that they're talking about, you know, making a walking path across to connect to our path, they've got the plans developed already, but yet they've chosen not to even talk to us. not to even talk to us about what their plans are. I mean, wouldn't that make sense? Now, there are, they are having meetings and we, we are able to attend, but...
Can you express yourself at those meetings?
Yes, and I did last night, but the, 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 um, the school board members actually told me they didn't want to discuss it anymore.
Well, yeah, if, if I could just interrupt here. Uh, it, the driver in this whole thing, really, is Pendott, okay? They have to, it's a state road we're dealing with, okay? Pot House Road, intersecting with another state road, Route twenty-nine. And, uh, as you probably know, they're, they're looking at left-turn lanes from all directions.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? That's gonna require road white. Um, so they've gotta come to grips with that, that decision and there's a, there's a sidebar decision on Halliwell Avenue, whether to keep that as a viable road to that intersection or not. Um, so, I think, I think once Pendott comes up with a plan that, that they agree with, then the school district can move forward in a public way without contradicting, ending up contradicting Pendott.
Right. We're at the beginning of the process and, and what, if, if you would document things in the sense of, give, just, you know, a bullet point memo. You know what I was talking about tonight, when I'm talking about, I'd like to have a piece of paper that when we have meetings with the school district and they, and we attend the planning commission meeting and this meeting and that meeting, then we as supervisors can bring up the question that was brought to us by you as a homeowner and say, "Okay, Josh, what are you doing about this concern of Mr., uh, of Pete Mercury?" That's, I won't remember what you said tonight unless I have a piece of paper to remind me of it X number of months down the road. What I'd like to have is just a very simple documentation from your homeowners association where you've had a meeting, you've discussed it, a consensus of you, your board of the homeowners, is it, is it concerned about the way in which X number of issues are being implemented or not?
I don't think we're right where, where I think that...
I think it's just too early.
Hang on, hang on just a minute now. I think number one, it's being videotaped and we keep that in history for so long. Madeline is taking notes on it. If you'll go back and look at your minutes for what transpired this meeting, you'll be able to review what Mr. Mercury said also. So I don't think it has to have anything special other than that.
Is the school district planning to come to our planning commission meeting this month?
Yes, and the planning commission meetings, as you know, are public. So it's another venue that you can raise these concerns because the planning commission really is the first step and where they're working through the planning phase of these, um, of the plans. So this is where you should be raising your concerns, is at the planning commission level so that as these plans mature, your concerns can be addressed as it goes through. Whether or not they do it, at least they can hear your voice at the planning commission level. Once the plans come to the board, it may be too late to have changes made because the planning commission has already made the recommendation, Pendott may have already done their things. You want to address all of this at the planning commission level.
Right, and, and, you know, I, I totally agree with that, but the, the way that they were talking last night, they were talking about increased costs, if they had to change this or change that, so leads me to believe that, you know, they've already, you know, kind of made their decision where to go. And, and I still for the life of me can't see how they can come right across without disturbing all of our landscaping and, you know, what we've developed...
They have made their decision possibly, but Pendott has not made their decision. The township has not made any decision. So their planning concept for this complex, that decision may have already been made by them. But that does not mean that it's going to stay the same as they move forward with the approval process either with the township or with Pendott. Like, you really want to put your concerns at the planning commission level. You want to get it out of the gate early.
We'll be there, I'll be there.
What do they need again?
And another, just, like, this one, one final, um, thing is the fact that, um, the discussion about lighting and having lights on these fields, which, um, I think that should be squashed right off the bat because from what he intimated last night is that there are no plans now, but it, it, it's not, they're not rolling it out for the future. So, I mean, I, I don't like, uh, just that, that statement right there. Why not roll it out right from the beginning so you don't...
Uh, we have a lighting ordinance and part of that lighting ordinance prohibits, um, a certain intensity of light from crossing the boundary of a property to a residential home or property, okay? Uh, there's a certain measure for that, that's number one. Number two is, um, we specifically point to having lighting be as shielded as possible directing down to where it's supposed to illuminate as opposed to, you know, going on three hundred and sixty degrees, uh, in a three-dimensional way. So, uh, there is that protection.
Okay. Thank you.
Please come to the planning commission.
Is there any more public participation on anything?
Mr. Maraz has.
John Maraz of Meadowbrook Lane. I also was at the, at the buildings meeting last night. And my question to them was, "What about the trees that they're gonna have to, you know, cut down?" And they mentioned that someone from the township will walk the grounds and based upon the ordinance that Skookel Township has, they'll tell them how many trees they have to replant.
Really?
Is that correct? And what is the type of ordinance that Skookel Township has versus East Pike Land or Phoenixville has?
It's part of our subdivision and land development ordinance that are certain trees, all native trees that need to be planted over there. And what the school district will be doing is submitting a landscape plan of all the other pages of the plan that will be submitted that will need to be reviewed by our township engineer, as well as our environmental advisory council, I would think, are gonna take a, a quick look at it. So yes, we will be reviewing that.
And, and the school district, from what I understand, is, is pretty, pretty sensitive to, uh, maintaining a, a level of screening from the, the playing fields versus the, the residences. So, um, you can emphasize that to them also, of course.
The other thing was the stormwater management. As Barbara mentioned, the comprehensive plan. We know this, the, uh, the groundwater on that golf course is tremendous. It goes in the Pot House Road and when we're talking about the stormwater comprehensive study, the well, with Chester County Conservation Stormwater Management must, and I understand that the, when we were looking at the engineers that were there last night, they were taking notes from our discussions about how the water is being run off from St. Anne Cemetery, which is outside the township. So I know we can't go on this private property, but it flows down from Phoenixville, which is St. Anne Cemetery, onto the golf course. And when you're gonna build, have a parking space for two hundred and forty vehicles there, plus roofing, and having all the water run off into the small creek there, you have a tremendous amount of stormwater. So when you're talking about all this, I hope either the, the planning commission or Chester County Conservation takes it upon themselves to make sure that they have enough, enough for one hundred, one hundred-year floods.
Thank you.
John Sartor is pretty good at it. The engineer, he's, when he's reviewing the plans, he'll make, yeah, yeah, he'll make sure that there, he's compliant with all the ordinances.
Mary, let me just get a warning.
Yeah.
Um, would this, would this brought to our attention by Mr. Maraz be something that the regional planning group would have a say on it all in any way? Because there, we, and the guy from Phoenixville Borough Council is right at the same table in our regional planning group.
I don't know.
So we can't bring water issues to the regional planning group?
We already did. We tried to do that with Penny Packers and it didn't work.
Yeah, I know, but there's no harm in trying again, especially with this school district being involved. In light of what I said earlier, this affects a lot of people.
Stormwater, stormwater issues not only will be reviewed by the township through our township engineer, but also be reviewed by the Chester County Conservation District. So there's a host of people who actually look at the stormwater management.
Okay, I feel better.
For this particular project.
More than just...
Not just at the township level.
Thank you.
And, and you're actually fortunate that, that this, this, uh, school's being built in an era where everybody that's environmentally involved, uh, from, uh, DEP to, to, right down to the Chester County Conservation District and, and the township, um, we're, we, we, we have to adhere to not just our own regulations, but state regulations and federal regulations. So you can, you can be assured that there's gonna be multiple levels of review here and that there was going to be, uh, minimal effect on adjacent property.
Well, when you hear from the school district and what they're talking about, they're gonna have this thing completed in two or three years.
Wow.
And I'm not telling you, you know, I know they're trying to push this all through and I understand everybody has their say in this, Chester County, Skookel Township, everybody. But I'm telling you right now, they think they're gonna have this thing built in two or three years.
Wow.
Yeah, well, uh...
That's right, exactly.
We, we, I, 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 I'm gonna sort of stand on my toes here mentioning this, but we, as a board and as prior boards have done, have typically been pretty restrictive when it comes, or, we, we've had a, we've taken a firm stand on applications to make sure they adhere to our ordinances and that they, that the right, uh, engineering is done. Uh, and this is also, this is not only done from an engineering standpoint, it's, it's got a, a additional input from the, the planning commission members as well as the environmental advisory council. So it's, it's gonna be a lot of scrutiny here and we're not gonna let the process be driven by the school district, okay? We're gonna, we're gonna let this thing go like it normally goes and, you know, let the cards fall where they may.
Well, the one building that Pete was mentioning, they did move for some of the residents there. It's a fifteen thousand, twenty thousand square foot maintenance building.
Right.
Presently exact of Valley Forge Christian College or University. They are moving it here to be more centrally located. And as I mentioned, that maybe they're putting too much onto a property and pushing too much on that type of property where they already have property at Valley Forge and the buildings are dilapidated, I understand that, but they don't have everything centralized. And as everybody's probably heard, in another five years, they're gonna be looking for another school. So they mentioned that last lady here.
But not here.
We don't know.
Not here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for letting us know about St. Anne Cemetery and the water runoff there, though. It's, it's good for, I won't forget that one.
I'm Kathleen Maraz.
Pardon me?
I'm Kathleen Maraz. Um, my question is, and we don't have a dedicated lane, Meadowbrook is a private lane. So I don't know what the rules are when it comes to private lanes. One of our concerns is when they get all these fields going and the children are playing and whatnot, that they're already talking about tournaments and, you know, what I don't want to see happening, and I don't know if it can even happen, is to have all that parking now come off Meadowbrook Lane.
No, they, they're not talking about that at all, as far, as far as I know. They're, they're...
They're not. That's right. They said they're not. But I'm very skeptical because when you start pushing things through, you know, maybe you get this one-day exception or, you know, we have exceptions when they're having tournaments or whatever the case may be. I don't want to see, you know, soccer moms pulling up on the lane, drop their kids off.
So your, your question, if I may, is whether the township can put no parking signs on a private street, is that your question?
That would do, yeah.
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, the, the, the residents can put no, uh, no parking sign within the limits of our sign ordinance, right smack at the corner of Meadowbrook Lane and Pot House Road.
Private lane.
You could, you could say, this is, you could say something like private residences, no parking...
No entry.
No entry.
No outlet.
With, with the police?
It's a private road.
What does that mean?
There's very little we can enforce on it.
Really?
Yeah.
So there's no taking the mom, no...
So I'd be stuck.
You could, if the air out of the tire.
Did you just say that out loud?
Yes, on the camera, I did say it too. You know, it's a little more concern to us than your ordinance.
I don't know whether the road can be dedicated, whether that would solve your problem. I, I don't know.
No, I don't want it dedicated.
Well, the situation is trespassing. If somebody is coming onto a private lane, do we call nine-one-one for trespass?
I would call nine-one-one, you might be able to have them towed away. I, I have researched it, I don't know the answer, but...
But it's, she, she brought up a good point. Within, because it's a private road, maybe there is a way in which your privacy can be enforced by appropriate signage. If you get the right signs up, then someone will be intimidated enough not to disobey.
I'll start a telecall.
I'll be your partner. Pardon me?
I think you still have, also in that area, not just Meadowbrook Lane, but you have Gay Street, I think is, is a private lane. Hollowaw is a public road actually.
Right, yeah, right.
That's dedicated. But you also have Gay Street, yeah, it's private also, so you're gonna have a lot of traffic. I know you have twelve hundred students coming here eventually.
Let's see what Pendott says and then we, and our planning commission, without Pendott weighing in yet, we're be, behind the curve, so to speak.
They did say that, speaking with Pendott, again, Jim, maybe you've heard also, they were not looking to close Hollowaw at this time, according to what the school district had said last night. I know five points are not what they, as ideal situation, if you're one of the nine worst traffic places in Chester County, whatever it is, they're not suggesting that will be changed.
As I understand it, that, that was a suggestion that Pendott offered more than two decades ago. Uh, and, and somehow it got tabled by the board and tabled by somebody and it never happened, so...
Okay, let's wind this thing up.
Speaking, speaking of Pendott, Bill, you mentioned the ultimate right-of-way. I think you meant, he said it was super right-of-way. So what you're saying is that it was in the plans to put a road in?
Yeah, we're not getting too deeply into this. When a developer develops a project, the concern is that if in the future a road needs to be widened, then, uh, the developer is usually required by the ordinance to dedicate up to an ultimate right-of-way line which is in further to the, uh, to the, to the property owner's property. And that means that if there's ever need for a road widening, the governmental authority doesn't have to condemn it because it's offered for dedication. That offer remains, there's an offer of dedication in this case for your development that goes twenty-one years. And if the offer is accepted during that time, then the, the government, which is us, can take it. It's been offered. So that's what's going on here.
Who's offering it?
The, uh, Pulte brothers, Pulte Homes offered it at the time of the, uh, application process. It's, it happens all the time. Every development, there's an offer of dedication, not every, there are exceptions, but, you know, the usual routine is there's an offer of dedication to the ultimate right-of-way line. Uh, it's either accepted right of way or can be accepted any time in the twenty-one years.
So, so how do you figure out where the markings are?
It's on the plan.
It is on the plan and it says specifically?
It should, yeah.
It should?
It should.
What if it's not?
Well, then we'll, then we'll deal with that later, okay? Can't deal with that tonight.
All right, that's, anything, anything more on public, um, participation? All right, I hear, I'd like to move into executive session to discuss litigation issues.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Meeting. Came out of a executive session in nine fifty-three. There, uh, we discussed, uh, litigation, uh, criteria and such. Uh, the executive session is over. So I hear a motion to adjourn the regular Skookel Township meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, hold on, favor?
Aye.
All right, so opposed.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.